Let me just through the quiet of the United States of America and to the Republic what stands, what nation, back to God, into the support. Let me see, Texas for.
All right, thank you for joining us at our budget workshop. This is version nine. If you're thinking about like what the numbers are, like how we got to nine, it's when anything kind of substantial changed, when our bottom line changed enough that we wanted it to be distinguished. So it seemed like every time we were going through a particular version, Ron and I would look at each other and like, well, okay, we better start the next one. So there was no like real rhyme or reason. There wasn't any, you know, like any number we were shooting for. It's just when we found something substantial, we went to the next one. So this is nine. So in front of you, I thought what we would do is go through the cost centers by category. And this is the same information that we'll be sharing with the council tomorrow. Because as you know, our meet, this meeting was actually scheduled for yesterday. And then our town council meeting is currently scheduled for tomorrow. So so we'll go through this process. At any time, if you have any questions, Rhonda is loaded with answers. So you can throw that out there and we'll, we'll go from there. Does that make sense? Yeah.
I had the one issue that I messaged everyone. So there's no debt service for the region three, so that's $28,000.
It's on here. I don't know where you didn't see it, but it's.
No. It's all paid.
Oh, it's all paid.
It's all paid, so we can take that $28,061.2.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I wasn't clear, I'm sorry.
I wish you would've told me how much I. I don't think I'm that quick.
Does that change in our budget?
Cause I just saw.
My near Tuesday, yeah.
I meant to bring a sheet that I, I don't check zero. It kept to be adult, education.
All right, so so starting at system administration. System administration accounts for three staff members and the school board stipend. So superintendent, assistant, business manager and school board. It also is where the retiree insurance is. And it is where the annual audit expenses are. And that is down 4.05% from last year's.
I have a question. What did our rate come in at? I know reading.
We got our notice, but we don't have the actual rate. I'm calculating it to be about 12.22%. But we haven't got our official notice that this is our rate.
Okay.
So one of the neighboring schools got their notice as well. And this is awful, but there's three percent.
We have a lot of experience.
Exactly, it's that, it's that mod, it is, it is. But that, you know, it's important to like, say that out loud, not in a bad way, but in a realistic way, when we have a lot of people who use the insurance, that creates our mod and our mod is higher. And so therefore our increase is higher.
Do we have any good ones? Why not? Six in the past has been a stark gap above a certain amount. Did we, like any cancers or heart attack or?
There's, because it is medical information, really the letter that we get explains like basically how the M E A trust is doing their calculations, but it doesn't say how many people. It's a general, it says over or under 51 people and we're over. You guys slow me down with questions if you have them, right? So the school administration, two principals and an assistant principal, two secretaries, one clerical assistant. And the number there is up 7.13%, including all of their materials, insurances, everything related to those positions. I have a cost center sheet, so mine is a little bit different than yours.
Yes, trying to follow. You skipped around a little bit, so, huh, okay. I didn't see the principals, but they're all together, right?
They are, they are, yep, yep. So you, you've interested me though, Kevin, you say I skipped around and it should be.
Well, this is school board, the new school board.
The school board is in with system administration. So like if you look, it's a darker print when it gets to each of the cost centers.
A little bigger.
Yeah, and a little bigger, exactly, yep, yep. So just so you guys know, I'm getting red notices and other districts, this district came in at 14%. So we are hoping right on target. Yeah. That's a health insurance. True, but they're all coming in, I'm getting the notices from as well, so I just have to point out the 14. System. So we're, yes, I will, thank you. Yeah, cause we'll use this again to. Okay, so if you want to move on to regular instruction, find the dark whacker line that says regular instruction. That section includes eight teachers, preschool through grade two. It includes six teachers, grade three through five. One art teacher. And nine teachers, grade six through eight, so that's our middle school. And then 10 great teachers, grades nine through 12. And that regular ed instruction line is an increase of 8.02%.
Joey, was that being related, I think we had a resignation of a teacher. Does that count in?
We, we left, we left that because we will be filling that teacher's spot.
But I mean, do we have enough money to cover it? So if somebody, we get a candidate that has a lot of experience, they could be higher.
Well, the one that is resigned actually has quite a bit of experience. We, we might want to address that though and go a little bit higher. But now that we have a little bit of extra money, with that $28,000, we can kind of adjust, maybe add in.
No. No.
But it really mean extra money.
One, you're doing this at the town tomorrow.
Yes.
What time?
Five thirty. We, but, but to answer your question really, we have included it and her salary, she was kind of midway through.
Okay.
So yeah.
So if we get somebody that has more experience, we got room in the budget to be able to.
Yeah. Yep. Special education is the next cost center category. That includes our portion of our shared special ed director. It is a full-time special ed secretary. In our systems, we have 20 ed techs. And we have five special ed teachers. Those teachers cover resource rooms, life skills rooms, behavior rooms. And we're looking to potentially increase and have a, an alternative education room. And if we do, we'll put that there. And it, as far as the finances go on that, we're already considering it because what we would do is shift somebody. But as far as looking at the levels of special education services that we provide, this is currently the stuff that we have. That is an increase in that session by 7.56%.
Has there been any? What's happened with the bottom of education, everything special ed money comes from there? It's gonna, we understand it's gonna be a block grant or something, so we know if we're even gonna get that money or.
Talking about that this morning, or not this morning, but before the meeting, a few minutes. And at this time, we're told to proceed. We're told to just do what we would normally do for this budget. I will say, to some degree, it does feel like a few things are unraveling. But I think if we're proactive and we look at, we, for one, if we do what we're told to do, which is proceed, and that's what's come out of Maine, so we'll proceed. But I do think that we're trying to make decisions with staffing and even with a lot of our expenses, in case something does happen. And a good example is food service. So food service, I think it's called Healthy Plate. Yeah, so that they have done, like you said, they've hit there and that is a program that we participate in, as do most main school. So what I'm told there is that the department of ed has a nutrition group. And that nutrition group's salaries, their wages are all frozen and they're being picked up by the state. So our children aren't feeling it because the money's still coming to us. But our state is feeling it, so we don't know what that will end up looking like. But again, we, they told us to proceed, so that's what we're doing and, yeah. But that's a great question and it definitely is on people's minds. Moving on, student and staff support. Student and staff support includes two librarians, one in each school. One school nurse shared between both schools. Two guidance counselors, one in each school. And one technology coordinator who works being the whole system. That budget is up 5.8%.
Cause I know there was an email going back to what the whole budget is down. So it was five point something, what is it now? Is that what I mean, so from last year?
Oh.
What's the ten?
8.14, wasn't it?
It's already on the last page.
Eight point one four?
Look at the, the last page has.
Local contribution.
I can look at the.
Yeah, you can look, what? When you get there, I guess I'm gonna say we'll go.
Okay. I was looking if we're under the, under that number additional.
Yeah. Yeah, it's funny that you mentioned it, cause I'm thinking like, if you look at this sheet that I'm doing by cost centers and you see that most of the cost centers are up by seven percent or five percent, it kind of makes you wonder how you go down on the end. But we, but we do go down on the end because we have a couple that are down some, but also because we did receive more subsidy too, so there's, there's a balance.
I didn't know this was subsidy.
It, it is, yeah. So now we're on to other instruction. Other instruction is our athletic director and various stipends related to co and extracurricular activity. That includes all of our sports programs, fall, winter, spring, summer, all of those. And our drama programs, our musicals, one act, show choir, all of those. And that budget is actually down 4.76% in that full category, cost center. The next one is career and technical and that is a zero change. The next one is facilities and maintenance. So that is one facilities manager. Five custodians between the two buildings. It includes all of the materials needed to maintain the building's fuel, electricity, building supplies. We save actually a lot of money by the near skill set of the people who are in the facilities team. This budget is down 6.27%. Transportation, as you know, we.
Can you go, can you go back to this?
Yes.
The vocational ed, you said that earlier, when I didn't know where we were. So what was the percentage on that? You said zero.
Zero change, yeah.
But it's gonna be.
A hundred now.
It's gonna be a hundred percent.
So transportation in the contract with Bradins, a year ago, we agreed on a five-year transportation agreement because Mr. Braden was looking for some funding. So in order to do that, the company he was working with wanted to see stability. So this is the second year on that contract. And you'll see that there's a 4.5% increase. And if you remember right, last year we had to come back and we actually, he, he was very gracious with us and allowed us to take away a point and a half, a percent and a half. So that is back to him because that is what we had originally agreed on. So that changes that budget by 5.98% this year. And then debt service is a zero change, $95,065.
That's our last payment.
That's our last payment. And other appropriations is down 84.2%. And that's, that's kind of the rundown, but I want to just kind of give you a few things to mull over on how some of those numbers got, got there. So like just salaries alone is $4,612,668. Benefits. So just health insurance is anticipated to be 876,585. So pretty close to a million dollars for health insurance. That makes the total for salary and benefits as $5,945,78. So that.
You do that one like that?
Yep. Five million, 940,578. And 19 cents.
And that's just sounds.
That salary. Yeah, so that's, that's 70% of our budget. Now, last year, that portion was like 82 or 84% was a little higher. So I mentioned that to Rhonda, like, how did we do that? But we do have a couple of employees this year that are, you know, that are paid less, less experienced. And we also have changed a little bit of the number of employees we have this year. So that's the result there. We do have some fixed costs, our retiree insurance is $405,405. We have out of district placements for students. We have some things that are challenging for us to project, like our building insurance this year went up substantially, like $30,000. So from the time you all voted on the budget last year to the time that we actually got our insurance policy, there was $30,000 difference. So that is challenging to plan on, you know, and, and so clearly we had some conversations with the insurance folks, but, but that is what it is. And I've talked with a lot of school systems and they also experienced significant increases in building insurance. One thing that's interesting, it's a little bit of a monopoly, I guess, I'll just choose that word because there's, there's lots of agents to sell us insurance, but there's not lots of companies to underwrite insurance for public school systems. So when I started really realizing that, you know, it is what it is. We, we owed them $30,000 more dollars that we had not budgeted and we owed the bill, we had to pay for it. Nihart, I, I bring that all in together at the same time because Nihart is the company that does the. Actuarial. Thank you, I never can say that right, actuarial. And there hadn't been one done for a couple of years in the system. And so last year, the auditor said, okay, you know, you've kind of been underdoing a lot of stuff and so we'll take your last one you had done. But this year, they're like, no, you've got to bring it up to, to current. Well, in bringing it up to current, it had been missed for a couple of years. So we had the current cost and then they charged us like a third for each of the two years. That, so, so that means we basically paid for a year and, and two thirds. So that's a substantial amount of money as well, somewhere to the tune of like 18,000. So unexpected. Our subsidy went up, so that's a good thing. Yep.
Have we spent, have we got all the money from NASA? Cause I heard that was one of the things that was cut.
S R ending in E R is, we are done, we, we got.
We've already got all.
We don't, thank goodness, we don't have projects out there because there are schools everywhere, municipalities with projects and they're now not gonna get funded. So where, that's one of the things Rhonda said to me today when we were chatting is that we are up to date on all of our grants, hallelujah. Like, we've been a little while since we've been able to say that, but our, our ESTA grants for like title, for our title programs and whatnot are all up to date. Everything is already submitted. We're, we're still on a at-risk list and so that means we have to submit information four times a year, but we've now successfully gone a year and a half. So hopefully we can drop that down because it's labor intensive. And that's what we've got, that's, that's what we've got. We will entertain any questions, like I said, Rhonda's got lots of answers.
Well, I've got you off before you do the running.
Yep, no, that's, Rhonda's gonna take over on that part. I was just doing the cost owners and you should, like you say, go to the back of your packet and you can keep on going. And that's. It should be the first page after, yeah. Okay, so we know the town share is gonna change with the 28,000. So projected revenue, our EPS assessment, which comes from the Title 29, Title of ED, not Title 29, ED 279, we're supposed to raise 1.3 million. The debt service of the debt service, local appropriation is $2,398,622.2. We had dealt ed local appropriations, 220,000. So our actual revenue that we're taking in is the revenue sheet. We've eliminated the school lunch program revenue. That's because the audit has said we have a very healthy school lunch program so we couldn't see raising the extra 15,000 this year if we didn't need it to keep inflating that school lunch program cost. We took that out. International program is down because we just don't have the students anymore and with the current climate, it's a little rocky, so we, we brought that back down to more realistic of 25,000. Most of that will come in in our dual enrollment program. But because of the, I guess we'll say likely tensions occurring in the world, like I, I think that that's a, a number that we'll have to kind of keep look at. We are, we have been in conversation with our international friends, but it's, you know, it's just hard to say what's going to happen.
Rhonda, can I, local additional appropriation, that's where the 28,000 will come off, right?
Yes, that'll affect that number, yes, it will. It should bring it back down to a little bit before we had 2.97%. So pretty lower than that 2.97% that we saw.
Okay, so you're. Wait, wait, you say.
Right, I'm just giving a number, but we've been so many burdens through that, that 28,000 will affect this, this bottom number here.
I see, I just, well, when we get there, what I'm looking at, and I know this is jumping again way ahead, I'm looking at the local contribution or asking the town to pay.
That's correct.
Cause that's, I mean, there's a lot of numbers on this budget. Some of them I understand, some of them, I don't understand, that's why we have a superintendent and we put the budget together. But what I'm really looking at is how much we're gonna cost the taxpayers in Millinocket over what we paid last year.
Okay.
And that's the percentage I, I wanna see. And right now it's 3.4400. And you said that you thought it would be.
I mean, I think we should be closer to the 2.97 we had in pre, in the previous version. I won't know that until I run the numbers again and actually look at everything.
That's one thing, if you go with the 3.14, you're only talking an increase of 2400s of a percent over inflation. If we go with the number you just mentioned, the 2.8 something, that would be under inflation. And that's inflation for 24. So we have come in either 2400s above it or a little bit below it. And I think that's a, I just wanna, I'm jumping ahead, but I think that's awful good job.
We've worked really, really hard with this budget and like I said, we're in version nine. We played all the numbers back and forth and looked at everything and, I mean, we're probably gonna be a tight budget again, but we are where we are.
But I know every year we can't do that, but this would be the first budget I've seen where we have very, very potentially, very potentially beat the inflation rate. And that's a, that's a heck of a job you guys have done.
Yep.
So, go back to.
Okay. EUT tuition is pretty much staying consistent and through Friday at 125. That usually comes in just about the same, this year maybe a little bit more than 125, but that's a great number to start our basis on. Elementary and special education is 13.3, we've kept it flat. Same thing with this EUT special ed, secondary tuition, we've kept it flat at 14. The transportation for EUT has gone up because the contract went up from Braden, so we had to, we brought that up. Athletic receipts, we've kept the same. The recreation department receipts are kept the same. The building rental has gone up slightly because we did go up with the agreement with Kiss Me's. We do get a small E-rate reimbursement, it's small. We can't really rely on it, but we, I did talk to Jared and that's supposed to be there. Misland history receipts are at 30,000, we've kept that the same. The EUT, we need to do this, EPS allocation did go up and it went from 3.9 to 4.5. So that was a good thing in our favor, which is also gonna help the town on the other end.
What's, what's the reason it went up is because of the, they forgot it down or?
Nope, we, a couple of years ago, they put into place, it's been a couple of board meetings, but you remember when I explained to you how they were looking at the socioeconomic status and looking at it through a different lens instead of just for, for an reduced lunch? Well, we participated in that both years that it was available. And so the first year, they did it just to see like, basically how it was going to work, what it was going to look like, but it didn't roll into EPS. This year it rolled into EPS. And so because of that, it, we've got some extra, yep.
Not so much for a lot.
We, we did and, and there are certainly, certainly are a lot of communities that, that didn't. Now, there's good and bad in that, right? Because you understand it's based on economic status and so we had, you know, a number identified. But the good thing is, is like Shawna and Tammy, Amanda particularly, they took the time to go through their numbers and then I was able to do a report for the state and we're reaping the benefit and profit in this budget. We have state agent client students we get reimbursed for, that's 14,000. Child development services, all the kids that we get, we get that reimbursed for a child who's paid through, we get reimbursed from CBS, that's for $3,200. It's just basically a salary for a stat member, probably a little bit higher though. Yeah, we're reimbursed. Yeah, but we kept at the same basis, that's just outside of the salary of the ed tech who's taking care of that, that child. But we kept at the same, basically that's just outside of the salary of the ed check who's taking care of that, to go child. Oh, that is also right. Oh, that's right. I got fifty nine thousand dollars for the Katadon ed check, special education director. I need to look at that, that might not be correct. Went from sixty to fifty nine. It should have a raise. That's not right. It should be at least, uh. Sixty one at least, yeah, should be sixty one. Okay. Um, then we have the reimbursement that we're gonna be getting for the health insurance. And the superintendent or cell phone, I rest in that to be a sixty five hundred. That's just a projection, see how that all comes in. And then we have no forward, carry forward at all from FY twenty four.
Okay, I have one question, Rhonda.
Yes, sir.
I think your budgeting to the superintendent is only a hundred thousand, so we have this thirty three thousand based on. So you, is done and us both paying her? Or is it, we're paying her and we get reimbursed?
We're paying for her portion that she works for the, for, um, the district.
Yeah.
She's a separate contract with Katadon.
So they're paying.
They're paying for that, but they're gonna split the health insurance and any other incidentals where we share different costs with that.
So thirty three thousand, that amount, sixty five hundred gives us the.
No, 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 they're not. They're just two separate contracts. So our, what we did is, is we've got the twenty five percent savings here. The other number is only there showing you what it, it was this year.
My question, this is a revenue of sixty five hundred dollars. Is Katadon paying this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
They're paying the half of Katadon's current health.
And then her thirty three thousand for her.
The thirty three thousand doesn't exist, does it? Because I have a separate contract with them.
Well, I'm saying they're paying to make that a difference. So whatever the raise was and stuff.
Yes, yes, it's a separate.
So that's something we don't pay, they're paying it much more.
Right, right.
That's another big savings in the budget, your salary.
Yeah.
I guess, go with my sharing services, we save twenty five percent and then some potentially.
That's right.
From your salary, which is.
Right.
Hard to work for you, but it's good for us.
It is hard. Yes. All right. Yeah, that's the end of our, our, so our projected revenue that we have is actually earning for the district is four hundred nineteen thousand. That's gonna be a little bit, please, a hundred and twenty thousand because of the sixty one thousand dollars in Katadon special ed.
EPS, we don't get any money for the other district kids that were paying?
Not anything extra because we're not part of what they call the C program. We don't qualify.
Well, that's your son, come break off talking.
And, um, years past, not so much this year, we have projected or we planned in case we had a couple of kids. Um, but if you remember right, a couple of years ago, the town said, you don't have to add in those anticipated or. placeholders because they've got our back, right? Remember, were on those meetings? So like those, those sums of money that used to be in there aren't in there. Because if we have something like that happen, we're supposed to be able to go to the town and say, this was not anticipated, we didn't ask for the rates taxes for it. Cause if you look back just a couple budgets, you'll see it was in there. I only make that point because it's such an expensive thing.
It's huge when you get a couple extra.
It is, it is. Yep. So the next page, um, is the cost center, um, categories. So that's what we went through first. I just have a list that in addition to having the name of the cost center, I have the items that is, um, you know, that covers. But if you look way to the right, you'll see all the percentages. So those are the numbers that I was, um, mentioning as well. And you all see that special education is highlighted slightly on your copies? And that's where I was, I had found an additional error. When I was looking through and converting the file over to a format or uploading into the system. I found this a small error, so I had to increase that special education line slightly from the versions that you saw before. The next page is the town share for the FY twenty six school budget. And this basically highlights all the things we've talked about. Oops. Um, all the things that we've talked about. Um, so like the, the local EPS is there and you can see what it looked like from, um, the two years prior. Um, debt service is there, you can see, um, what the slight change was there. So each of the categories on the left are identified on the right, um, showing you what some of the differences are. And then if you go all the way to the bottom, it shows you what the increases to from FY twenty five to FY twenty six. And because there's a lot there, if you turn the page, you'll see. All of that information kind of just put in script numbers. So what the year was, the amount, the town contribution, what the percentage was and what the difference is. And if you look through the, uh, percent of increase and decrease, like I think that's a pretty interesting list of numbers. Um, starting from down in like sixteen, seventeen prior to COVID where you had a fair amount of income from, um. Foreign students to where COVID hit us. And then we've had some rebound with some, um. With, you know, COVID, between COVID funding, between some of the expenditures, between the lack of revenue. Um, but I personally feel like we can be proud of those percentages going from, um, five point seven, um, in twenty three. And then the four and then the eight and then down to three. Look, I think, and that's just kind of like a simplistic view if, because there are so many numbers.
I wanted to say one thing back on the last page, Shelly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. It went up, um, looks like about fifty thousand dollars on the local appropriation, two seventy nine, but we've gotten extra six hundred thousand. So, I'm not sure that anyone understands that. You see what I'm saying? So that is, we're, we're spending more, but we're getting. Ten pounds more than what.
Correct.
What that amount is to be spent.
That's right, that's right. And that, and that's a good point because by the formula itself. We're obligated to spend in proportion or ratio, um, for what we raise locally and what they give us. That's the, yeah, that's a good point. And that, as they say, is all we got.
And that.
That is what it is, right?
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely, yes.
So we're gonna go on tonight and we go on and continue on that twenty eight thousand. Huh?
Yes, we can, we'll make that adjustment.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep. Other thoughts?
Again, your time to leave your presentation is at five thirty tomorrow?
Yes, I don't. I don't know when, you know, where we are on the schedule. I don't know if it's a couple of presentations. Um, but we're honestly, we're gonna do what we just did. Um, does that, you can give me feedback or give Rhonda feedback, like, does this work? I think a couple of things, um, you mentioned maybe, uh, put some page numbers, um, to go by that, um, might be helpful, so I can do that. Um, but do you feel like you have, you've seen this, you've kind of been experiencing it, so like, did you have enough information or?
Yeah.
Right. And so you are absolutely welcome to join us tomorrow, um, or, you know, or not, or we'd love to have you do it, for sure.
Do you want us to?
I always love your support. Yes. But I also know everybody has a life and we've changed meeting days and, so that's kind of, you know, changed people's work schedules. Thank you, Rachel, for that.
I mean, the world on that is.
Yeah.
For a little German, based to a German, make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
One, two, one, two, three, four.
Was that important?
Yes.
For anyone who's watching by Zoom, um, we'll, we can just exit out and just log back in when it's closer to four thirty. Thank you.